Hi guys, so welcome to the stream. If you didn't know already, this is going to be a Q and A and study session on the post-classical eras. So we're going to be going over what is period 1 and 2. So what's really cool about these Q and A sessions is that you guys can ask whatever questions you want about these two periods, and then I'll also answer questions about this year's new exam, or any other questions that you leave below in the Ask a Question section. So if you haven't already, be sure to add some questions there in the Ask a Question box down below, and I'll answer them when is appropriate. So if you didn't know already, if you haven't seen any other streams, my name is Charlie. I am a sophomore in high school in New Jersey. I took AP World as a freshman, and I got a 5 on the exam. So today, I'm just here to answer any questions you guys have about the first two units of AP World. So just before we get into the actual questions, there are five of our weekly stream calendar, what days videos come out, and what days you can anticipate to watch more videos that will come out. Some upcoming live reviews for AP World. We have an Expanding Empires with Eric Beckman. We have tomorrow Cold War with me and another colleague named Jed Kwiat. And then we're going to have an early modern review with Melissa Longnecker. If I'm going fast, it's because I anticipate there to be a few questions, so it might take a little longer to go over the content. So before we get into the actual questions, be sure to follow Fiveable on Twitter, Twitter, sorry, Instagram and YouTube. And then this is how it's going to go today for Q and A. So we're going to go first with Unit 1 events, and I actually have slides with what I think are the events in Unit 1 that you need to know. And if you don't know one of them, then you can ask whatever question you want. And then we have the Unit 2 events, and I have another list that I'm going to show you of events that I think are important for Unit 2. There's a lot less for Unit 2 that I think are more important, so that might be a little quicker. And then by the end, any questions you have about this year's exam, or any questions in the Ask a Question box that may correspond with that topic. So our first slide is on the Global Tapestry, which is Unit 1. Just some events that I think are important for this. Events that I have seen on practice AP tests that I've taken, or on the actual AP test that I took last year. These are definitely some of the more important events, and I organize them by region of the world. So if you want me to go over a certain region of the world, like all of China, I would be glad to do that. If you want to do a specific topic, I can do that as well. Just make sure to keep the questions going, so we can keep going. Okay, we have some questions. "How did the Mali Empire transforming Timbuktu into Islamic center affect Islam as a region?" So this might be going a little bit into Unit 2, but I'm still going to go over it. Timbuktu is a city, it's known for its mud temples, or they use like an adobe brick to make mosques. And it's located now in present-day Mali, Mali Empire. So at this time, the Mali Empire is at the crossroads of Trans-Saharan trade. People pass by there, a lot of people of different religions, different faiths. And at some point, a lot of cultures become mixed at the time. We have a lot of people of different backgrounds, as I said before. But at the time, Timbuktu becomes an Islamic cultural center just because this region is majority Muslim. And because people are passing through these general areas, people are becoming more exposed to Islam, if they were traders, and for some, if they practice some type of animist religion, for example, which were really followed in Africa during this time. The majority of Africans in the South still, or the Central, were still animists, following traditional religions. So if you were passing through here and you had a certain faith, or you had a different religion at this time, you become exposed to Islam, you become exposed to different things, different beliefs, different cultures, different languages, and it promotes the spread of Islam through a greater part of Africa. So to answer your question, that was a little long, but I think it answered your question. So because Timbuktu became an Islamic center, at the center of trade, well-known mosques because of it, it caused Islam to be spread more in Northern Africa. If you have any more questions about that, you can ask me. But I was just trying to do like the general answer to your question. Yeah, it seems like there's some about empires in South and Southeast Asia. So we have the Majapahit that someone mentioned, and then all of South and Southeastern Asia. So I'll just go over that entire section. So I combined South and Southeastern Asia, because that's how the College Board does it. When we talk about South Asia, we're talking about India, we're talking about Pakistan, but mainly India at this point, maybe Sri Lanka a little bit with the Tamil Kings. But we're pretty much staying on the Indian subcontinent. And when we talk about Southeastern Asia, we're talking about Cambodia during this time, Thailand, Vietnam, the Philippines, that general area. So our first word is the caste system. This is for Southern Asia, so like I said before, India mainly. So they had a caste system in place, which if you studied this before break ended, it's almost a hierarchy ranking people based on their occupations. So people who were priests were ranked higher than people who were cleaners, along those lines. So caste was very influential on Indian society, and you can still see it today, where people are being impacted by, historically, my parents were a doctor, but my parents were unemployed, and they were seen as untouchables. It's like the lowest of the low in the caste system, you called them the untouchables. And it begins to affect how you are treated in society. So that's just another form of social hierarchy. The two major ones that we'll see are in China and then India. But India's one still exists today, as well as China's, but China's may be in a lesser extent. If you hear any noise in the background, just know that there are airplanes passing by in my area. I live in New York City, by New York City, so there's airplanes coming back and forth quite often. Religion, so South Asia and Southeastern Asia are this melting pot of different religions, and almost to a point, this beginning of diffusion of different religions. So we have Hinduism, which is mainly in India, but we also have some people that practice it in modern-day nations like Myanmar, or Bangladesh. Bangladesh not as much, but that general area at this time, before they were kind of confined to certain religions. So Hinduism is a polytheistic religion, which means that you believe in many gods, so not like something like Christianity, or Judaism, or Islam, where you, it's monotheistic, you believe in one god. So that is Hinduism, they believe in a lot of major, some of their major beliefs are reincarnation, the belief that you can die and be reborn again in a different body. And I think that's all we need to go over Hinduism, just a brief idea of what Hinduism is. You don't need to be completely knowledgeable on everything about the religion, as long as you know some basic facts about it, that it's polytheistic, that its believers believe in Hinduism, sorry, they believe in reincarnation. The majority of them during this time live in India. That's pretty much all you need to know. And then Buddhism is another religion, actually founded, created by this guy who was originally a Hindu. This is the belief in, almost similar to Hinduism, because the guy was, used to be a Hindu, but there's some differences in the religion as well, namely the belief in the Buddha. So we're going to see two different branches of Buddhism during this time. We're going to see a branch that's more focused around India, and then a branch that's China and the Koreans. You don't need to know much more other than that for Buddhism. And then we have Sikhism, and that is a little later, this is about the 1500s now, founded by a man named Guru Nanak, and it's another religion that is, takes a lot of beliefs from other surrounding religions of the areas, a little bit of Hinduism, a little bit of Islam. And they believe in the 12 gurus, 12 people that were successors of Guru Nanak in the religion. And then we talk about Islam, monotheistic religion, widely practiced in Southern Asia, Southeastern Asia. So nations like India, Pakistan, Bangladesh, Indonesia, southern parts of the Philippines. And that's all I would say, if you need to know about Islam in South and Southeastern Asia. All of these religions start to merge a little bit during this time, in something called like a religious diffusion. Syncretism, these religions begin to meld and combine their traditions together to create a melting pot. And we still see that today in nations like Malaysia or Thailand. So Indian Ocean Trade, we're talking about Indian Ocean Trade, we're talking about trade in the Indian Ocean. Mainly Indian Ocean Trade was between countries in Southeastern Asia and Africa. We have, on one side, we have India, Indonesia, nations that are known for producing spices during this time, other luxury goods. And then we have the Swahili coastal states, which are also known for importing goods during this time. And they begin trading back and forth, it's mainly luxuries this one, so stuff like spices and silk, unlike some other trades, a little bit later in history. And then this seems like to be what you guys asked about, just the empires. Again, you don't need to know everything about these empires. If you have a brief idea of where these empires were, and what religion they were, that's pretty much all you need to know, because these empires, mainly why we talk about them is because of religion. So when we're talking about the Khmer Empire, that is modern-day Cambodia. If anyone's ever heard of Angkor Wat, it's a Hindu temple. It used to be a Hindu temple in Cambodia, which is now a majority Buddhist with a Hindu minority. So it's just showing the religious syncretism in the region. And that's pretty much all I need to know about this empire. All three of these empires show religion, and they show different changes in religions in South and Southeastern Asian religions. So when we're talking about Srivijaya, that is an empire located in what is now Indonesia, Malaysia, that general area of Southeastern Asia. It is a Buddhist empire, and it's a monarchy. And that's again, pretty much all you need to know, just showing how these different religions coexist in the same area. And then we're going to talk about the Majapahit, which is again, in modern-day Indonesia. I think only the island Java, and it is split between Hindus and Buddhists. So that's, that's pretty much all you need to know is religion for that. So I hope that answered your question about the Majapahit Empire and all these empires. Again, as I said before, it's not really about knowing everything about these empires. You just want to know that they were involved in Indian Ocean Trade, and you want to know that it has to do with the blending of religions in this region. And it seems like we have a question about Zoroastrianism? Yeah, what Mr. Beckman said, it's not essential. It doesn't really fall into the time categories that we have for the new AP World, where it starts a lot later than it did before. Zoroastrianism is one of those really early religions that we learn about early in AP World, because it's one of the first, if not the first monotheistic religion that we see in this course. But because of how the class was cut, you don't need to know about it. But if you know about it, it's fine, it's not going to hurt you if you know about Zoroastrianism. But if you don't know about Zoroastrianism, it's essentially just a monotheistic religion that started in now modern-day Persia, and the majority of their followers live in modern-day Iran and India. And that's pretty much all you need to know about Zoroastrianism. So if anyone has any questions about China, the Civil Service exam, different economic developments, or religion there, the Americas or Africa. If not, we're going to go to the end of Unit 1, because I have two slides for Unit 1. And the next slide for Unit 1 is just Europe. So if you have any questions about Europe, you can put them in the Ask a Question now. If you still have any questions about China, or Southeastern Asia, Southern Asia, the Americas, or Africa. It seems like Mr. Beckman already answered about agriculture in the Aztec Empire, which is good. So if you guys don't have any other questions about these empires, or if you have any questions about this year's exam, I'll answer those at the end when we get to the exam Q and A, when we talk about the changes. Okay, not me, but they answer, it looks good. Yeah, it actually is really good, whoever, Sana or Asana, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing that incorrectly. That's essentially what Chonpa agriculture is. It's just helped productivity in growth. They were doing agriculture, agricultural-based societies, and it just made planting easier for these different cultures. So it seems like we don't have any other questions, which is fine. So we're going to go to the next slide, which is Unit 1 Global Tapestry still, but this is going to be Europe. So if you guys have any questions about Europe, Europe is, a lot of stuff is going on in Europe during this time. We have a lot of unrest, we have a lot of religious-based conflict, a lot of religious issues, but we also have new advancements in the continent as well. But there's also a decent amount of information, because there's just so much going on in Europe, because Europe is still very split. So if anyone has any questions about Europe, be sure to leave them in the Ask a Question. And if not, we can go to Unit 2. But there's quite a few events in here, so if not, I might want to go over a few of them. So I'm just going to go over them a few, very briefly, just a summarization of some of the events. And then if you still have some other questions, some more specific questions, you can go in as I describe them. So we're going to start with empires, we have two major empires in Europe. We have many other ones, but these are the two that I chose, and the two that I think are most important, come up the most. We have the Holy Roman Empire, which is not Roman, it's in modern-day Germany. And then the Byzantine Empire. So both of these empires, both of them have a lot of conflicts with religion during this time. The Holy Roman Empire in the 1400s, 1500s have a lot of issues, split issues between Catholicism, Protestantism, and eventually Lutherism, which becomes more practiced in Europe after Martin Luther. And then the Byzantine Empire, we have the Orthodox, the beginning of Orthodox practices in there, but we also have Muslims in the area as well. We have a question about, can you explain the defenestration of Prague, Diet of Worms, and Treaty of Augsburg? Yeah, these events are all part of the same major event. So if you went over the Reformation, and whenever you were in AP World, when we were back in school, you might have went over these, you might not have. They're just specific events that happened during the Reformation. So if you don't know what the Reformation is, Martin Luther, he was a, he believed that the church was wrong for selling indulgences. And essentially what indulgences are, is you would pay your way into heaven. And people were convinced that if they paid people money, they would be able to go into heaven. When in reality, they were using this money to buy, to build the cathedral in Rome, the St. Basilica. He believed that this was wrong, he believed that it was a really corrupt system. He also didn't like that people could just elect whoever they wanted to be in the church. He believed that it was unfair, and it made the church system more corrupt. So he wrote something called the 95 Theses, and he went to, you've probably seen the picture of him hammering the 95 Theses on the wall. So he actually went on Halloween and nailed it on to a door of the church, just highlighting the issues with it. And people began to catch on, and this was, people were beginning to catch on, and it started this whole bit of conflict between the Protestants, who arise from this, and the Catholics. So the defenestration of Prague is just something that happens in Prague, Bohemia at the time, now modern-day Czech Republic. So there's a group at this time in Prague called the Hocites. And essentially what they are, are what, they were, I'm losing my words. They were Hocites, Hocites are essentially Protestants, they believed in some of the ideas. And essentially, defenestration is a fancy word for pushing someone out of a window. So what they did was, they pushed about 10 Czech Hocites out of windows, and it caused a lot of issues in Bohemia religion-wise, because it was kind of just a shocking event, that people were pushing people of other religious beliefs out of windows. The Diet of Worms, so the Diet of Worms has nothing to do with a diet or worms. A diet is just an old-time word for a treaty. And Worms is a city in Germany at this time. So essentially with the Diet of Worms, Martin Luther had come, and he was scared, and people were putting him on trial, because they were going to excommunicate him from the church. And they gave him the opportunity to say, do you want to, from, do you want to take back everything you've said, and we won't excommunicate you, and he refused to. So they, his beliefs had become so widespread at this point, that there was just no way for them, for the church to erase anything he had said about Catholicism. So the Treaty of Worms and the Treaty of Augsburg, both of these around the same time. And what comes out of the Diet of Worms is the Treaty of Augsburg, which gives kings in Germany, they're given the right to declare their region, their empire is either Catholic or Protestant, but they're not allowed to call them Lutheran, or the other way around, like Catholic and Lutheran, but you can't become Protestant. So that's what came out of the Reformation essentially. Was there a reason behind hanging them on Halloween? There's no reason behind it, at this point, Halloween was Samhain, it was a pagan holiday in Ireland. There's no reason it hadn't spread to other parts of Europe, and Halloween doesn't become something that's really widely celebrated until the 20th century. So it was just kind of a fun fact, so it really has nothing to do with them doing it on Halloween. It just happened to happen on Halloween. The Reconquista, so this is another religious conflict, this is Spain. And at this time in Spain, we have King Ferdinand, and we have Queen Isabella. And they're probably the two most well-known nobles in Spain during this time, and probably in all of Spanish history. So they believed that they could not have Jews or Muslims in the country. Spain is, still to this day, is a very Catholic country. And they believed that any type of religion that wasn't Catholicism was hurting Spanish society. So they gave people the option, you're either going to convert or you're going to leave Spain. So a lot of people were killed in the process, a lot of people left, a lot of people didn't. People that left mainly went to Northern Africa, places like Morocco or Tunisia. But the people that stayed would convert. But then there was another issue with them, and they believed, there's this rumor going around that people who converted didn't really convert, and they were just saying that, and they were frauds. So it led to many massacres, many deaths. And eventually, as a result of this, the Spanish economy completely goes down as a result of the Reconquista. So many people leaving, and especially people who had higher positions. A lot of Jews and Muslims had seats in, not exactly Parliament, but in their government. They had roles, important roles in society, and once they left, society kind of fell apart almost. So that's just my brief description of the Reconquista. So we're going to head into Unit 2, if there's no other questions. I know that Europe has a lot going on, so it's fine if there's other questions, but if not, we're going to go to Unit 2, which is a lot shorter. There's very few events in Unit 2, there may be like five major events that they put there, because many of them revolve around the same thing, and that thing is trade. So these are what I think are the most important words, or the most important things for you to remember. So we have four major ideas with some vocab words below that you might want to know, especially because me taking AP exam, or just taking practice exams, I have seen quite a few of these words show up. I've seen a lot of the Silk Road vocabulary coming up on practice exams, and I have seen Indian Ocean Trade vocab words on exams as well. So we have the Silk Roads, another method of trade during this time, Asia and Europe connecting. And we also have the Sand Roads, which I didn't include as well. If you want me to go over the Sand Roads, or Trans-Saharan African trade, essentially the same thing, just different words to refer to them. We have trading cities, people are trading throughout the world, people of different cultures. And what this causes is a mix of different cultures, different religions, different beliefs. And everyone's creating these diasporic communities, these communities that are on, along the Silk Roads, and people that are absorbing all this culture and religion because of trade during this time. And then we have the spread of diseases as a result of trade. If you want me to go into depth about any of those, you don't really need to know any, like in-depth details about any of the diseases, except maybe the bubonic plague, I would know just a little bit about. But the Plague of Justinian, or the Plague of Cyprian, you don't really need to know anything about as much, just that they occurred as a result of trade. And then the bubonic plague is something that I would know a little bit more in depth. Seems like we have another question, so who are the Sodians? Another diasporic community, they live along the Silk Roads, modern-day Iran, Tajikistan, Afghanistan, that general region. They lived on the Silk Road, as I said before, they were involved in Silk Road trade. You don't really know much other than that, you just need to know that they traded, they lived long. And there's a lot of different diasporic communities along roads during this time. A lot of people involved in trade, but if, as long as you know that they were involved in trade, they lived in the Middle East, Central Asia region. They're Persian people, that's pretty much all you need to know. They don't exist anymore, that's just the general information that you need to know about the Sodians. So just another brief, dumb, little summarization of some of these events. And if you guys have more in-depth questions, you can ask as I go. Mongols, we have, seems like a lot of people love the Mongols, mainly because of John Green with his Mongol videos for Crash Course World History. We have the Pax Mongolica, Time of Mongolian Peace. We see a lot of Pax articles, not exactly now, a little later in history. And then we have the Mongol Empire being split into Khanats. And then we have a bunch of different Khanats, or little separations, little regions of the Mongol Empire. And I would say the one that's most known is the Golden Horde, but you don't need to know anything in-depth about any of those. So the astrolabe was invented by the Muslims. Yes, the astrolabe was invented by the Muslims as a way to navigate the seas, to use the moon and its position, something astronomical, to find their way around during Indian Ocean Trade. So innovations, like you said before, the astrolabe, we have Latin sails, which make it easier to get the wind, so you can move, because trains, trains, sorry. Ships at this point are with sails, they don't have motors at this time, it's too early. It's about 1450 to 1750 period, so they have to use the sails to get the air, so that they can move. And then we have dhow ships, and then we also have a Chinese ship called the Junk, I didn't include. But those are all innovations in Indian Ocean Trade, or trade in general, that is water-based. And then we have the Trans-Saharan trade, Mansa Musa, that's the king. He is most well-known for his pilgrimage. Um, he's known for having quite a bit of gold on him. Um, quite a bit of gold riding camels um, to Saudi Arabia. And there's not much more to know about that. And then religion, just know that because of the Trans-Saharan trade, we have the spread of Islam, like I mentioned before in unit one, throughout Northern Africa. We also have these people called Griots who um, sing songs. Um, and that leads to um, the spreading of certain religions as well. So if any of you have any questions to go in more in-depth about any of these events, there's um, a lot less events for here. So it's like, you can ask questions if you'd like. But they're all gonna be like somewhat connected, or I kind of briefly went over it. You can ask really specific questions if you'd like. And if not, then I'm gonna go into random questions slash questions about the exam slash any advice you need for the AP exam. So what really are the Griots? So the Griots are a um, a people that sing songs and they spread religion and they were located across the Trans-Saharan um, area. And what they would do is they would use music as a way to convert people, not forcibly, to religion. And usually this was Christianity. Um, but also Islam as well. Griot is a French word. And it was um, eventually um, came up with the word um, as a result of French colonization in Africa. Um, so Islam was spread through Indian Ocean trade routes as well. So Islam was spread um, many different ways, including the Indian Ocean trade. Um, the Indian Ocean trade was really interesting because there were so many religions involved. We had people who were Hindus from India, but mainly we had um, a lot of Muslims in this region who are merchants, especially from the Swahili city-states. And from places such as Indonesia during this time, which was partly Muslim, partly Hindu, partly Buddhist. Um, some parts of India, we have um, Myanmar, essentially Myanmar, not Myanmar, um, um, Malaysia, some of those regions that have like these diasporic communities that are um, a combination of Islam and Hinduism and Buddhism. So Islam was spread through the Indian Ocean trade routes as well, if that was your question. Um, I'm gonna see if there's any other question. So where was the Great Khanate? Um, you just need to know that the um, Mongol Empire was very expansive. Um, Mongol Empire goes through Europe and Asia as well, um, through the I'm sorry, the eastern side of Asia, like the China, um, Mongolia, Russia region, and it goes very east, um, almost up to Ukraine, Poland, that region. It's a very expansive empire and it covers a lot of territory. So um, the um, Great Khanate, I believe you asked, the Great Khanate is located in Asia, I believe. Um, I could double check, but I'm pretty sure that the Great Khanate is located in technically still within Asia boundaries. Um, and it was prob- most likely located in China or Mongolia, since those tend to be the most important nations. When we talk about the Mongol Empire, we talk a lot about China and Mongolia mainly. So we're going to go to um, any questions you guys have about um, this year's exam? Or um, um, any AP world tips in general? If you still have any questions about anything, even if it's not in the post-classical area era, even if it's something like um, American independence, for example, or something that's a little later in history, if you still have questions about that, I can answer that now. Because that is pretty much all I prepared um, for the Q and A session, just some general um, facts, some general things that you have to know from the post-classical eras. So if you have any questions that aren't from the post-classical era, something later, or just a general history question, something about this year's exam, the format, the DBQ, I can answer that now. So don't be scared to add some questions. I can answer as many as you guys want or need. So which Khans do you know for the goal of, for the Mongol Empire? So I don't think you need to know many Khans. I would just know Chinggis Khan or Genghis Khan. Um, I don't really think there's a need to memorize every um, Khan, every leader of the Mongol Empire, as long as you know a brief amount of information about Genghis Khan or Shingis Khan, who he was, how he conquered. Um, that's pretty much all you need to know. It's not about going into depth for some of these events, although it is good to know a decent amount of information about all the events. But it's not necessary, necessary that you memorize everything about every single event, as long as you have a general understanding of some of the lesser important events. And they still are important, but it's not as important as something like World War Two, where you would need to know more about like certain battles, um, or certain um, things that happened. But when we're talking about the Mongol Empire or Khans, as long as you know Shingis Khan and like general information about the Mongol Empire, it's really fine. Um, so what did all major world religions have in common during this era? And what affected they have? So um, so I would say during this time, our major religions would be Christianity, Islam, Judaism, Hinduism, Buddhism. And then Confucianism, which some people consider as a religion. Some people see it more as like something like legalism, more of an ideology. Um, as well as Taoism, again, something that is heavily contested as to whether it's a religion or something um, more like an ideology. Um, so we can go with those religions. If you guys want some more religions that you are interested in or that you have mentioned AP world and you want me to include those. Um, feel free to leave them in the comments, but some similarities between Christian, um, Christianity, um, Islam and Judaism and Zoroastrianism, as someone mentioned before earlier. All monotheistic religions, believe in one God. And then we have something like Hinduism, which is polytheistic, believes in many gods. Um, we have these ideas of um, Reformation. Um, sorry, not Reformation. We have these ideas of reincarnation that we see in um, Hinduism and Buddhism, the idea you can die and be reborn again, which is not something that we see as much in um, Christianity. Um, Christianity, we have the idea of heaven and hell. You die and your fate um, decides where you will spend the rest of eternity. And we don't see that in places in religion, other religions. Um. Um, geographically, Christianity at this point is pretty much um, well, Christianity originally came from the Middle East. But at this point, we have some Christians in Middle East. We also have Christians in the Balkans, the rest of Europe. We have Christians in um, the Caucasus. We have them in Armenia. Um, that general area. Um, eventually we'll have Christianity spread to Africa, yeah, and Ethiopia. Um, which is an Orthodox um, region, but there is also Christianity in Ethiopia during this time. Um, Islam will see um, in the Balkans as well a bit, but still, that's a very like um, a mix of the region, the Balkans. We see um, um, Christianity and Islam in the intersections of those in both regions. And eventually that will cause some conflict um, later on in history. If you watched any stream that had to do with um, Bosnian wars or any type of Yugoslav war, Balkan conflict. Um, when we're talking about Hinduism, it's pretty much only in places like India and Southeastern Asia. We don't really see Hindus in Europe yet. That won't happen until we have a migration of Hindus, of Indians to um, the UK. But that's later in the twentieth century. Um, Buddhists, again, only confined to places like Indonesia, India, China, Korea during this time, a bit of a larger area, mainly because Buddhism is um, separated into different groups during this time. But um, in Asia, um, for the most part. And then um, what other religion am I missing? Judaism, which um, initially started um, in the Middle Eastern regions. Um, there are some Jews still in this time in those regions, but they um, majority are in Europe. Um, Eastern Europe, um, Russia during this time. And then we're, what other religion did I forget? Islam. Islam is mainly in Africa, some parts of Europe, some parts of Asia. It's more of a spread religion. And then we also have animists or um, people, those are people who see um, spirits and non-living things, things like rocks or trees and everything has a spirit. Or um, traditional religions um, are pretty much practiced everywhere. At this point, we see a lot of traditional religions in Native American colonies still, because this is before um, the point of colonization in places like South America, North America. So Native Americans are still practicing their traditional religions. And then we have people who practice their traditional religion still in Australia. Oceania, we see um, Aborigines and the Mayori still having their own um, religious um, beliefs. And their own religious practices still. And um, other religions that eventually spread there, like Christianity, especially in places like Mexico, haven't con- gone there yet, but they eventually will with um, the following units when we see European exploration. So I hope that answered your question about um, what um, they all had in common. So they all are in similar places in the world. And it seems like the majority of the world's religions at this point are in Europe and Asia. And Africa as well, but we don't really see a lot of the major religions that we think of nowadays in places like Australia or um, North and South America. Um, so what's the difference between secondary cause and contextualization? So um, so when we're talking about um, I'm sorry, I have to look at the question again. When we're talking about secondary causes, that's something called causation. And when we're talking about causation, we're talking about causes and effects of things. We're talking about um, the historical significance of those causes and effects. We're talking about um, historical processes, historical developments. And we're talking about um, the primary and the secondary causes. Um, but when we're talking about contextualization, you can talk about causes, but when I'm talking about contextualization, I like to talk about um, di- different historical developments that were happening during the time that affected it. Not exactly a cause, but other events that were happening during the time. Um, how this context influenced an event, but maybe didn't directly lead to it. So there's um, not exactly like a fine line between the difference, but um, contextualization is just a brief historical background to something while a secondary cause is um, what actually caused it. So um, so the Mughal in the Mongol empires are the same right now. Um, the Mughals are in Southern Asia and the Mongols are mainly in Central Asia. And they eventually um, separate, um, but they, I see um, Evan is answering the question for you. So if you have any other questions about anything, the new exam, the, I see that like a lot of people are still really confused about the new exam with the ten-question DBQ. Um, so if you have any questions still about the um, new DBQ, um, how it's graded, um, what you can do to practice um, practice DBQs, um, especially since it's kind of hard to get five-document DBQs. Um, because we've never had five-document DBQs before in AP world. Um. If you have any, if you need anything summarized briefly, any other historical event that we may not have gone over today, that you still think is really important or you still wanna know about, just out of interest, you can ask. Um, so I'm gonna wait for some questions and if not, we can just either chat or we can end the broadcast a little early, since this is a Q and A and Q and As usually don't um, and don't last a whole hour sometimes. So someone suggested using a randomizer to select five documents. Um, you could do that. Or um, Fiveable actually has created um, DBQs and we do have DBQs available on our website. So if you would just like to check those out, um, you can find some practice DBQs um, that you would want to practice, that I believe have five documents. Um, if Mr. Beckman can say if I'm wrong. Um, but I believe there are five-document DBQs on the Fiveable website, if I'm not mistaken, that you can use to answer and practice your DBQ writing skills. Um, we also have this um, new um, thing called HyperTyper. And um, because AP exams are online this year, what um, a lot of people are scared about is they are slow at typing or they do, they aren't um, comfortable enough with their skills in typing, that they feel like they can write a solid argument and type a solid argument in the time allotted. So Fiveable has something new called HyperTyper, where you choose your subject and you choose a study guide. So let's say I choose World History and I wanna practice um, Eastern Asia in um, the fourteen hundreds. So give me that study guide and I get to type that study guide, see my words per minute while also reading content. Um, Fiveable content about the events and different events during this time. So if you have some free time today, be sure to check out HyperTyper. I've been using it to practice for AP Euro. Um, and I really like it. I think it's really interesting and it um, to read about history while still practicing my typing, cuz I'm not the best typer. So that's definitely a, a fear of mine, is that I'm going to be really slow at typing. But then I feel like if I take a picture and send it, that one, they might not be able to read my handwriting, or two, I might not be able to submit it on time. Um, so if anyone has any other questions about the exam, um, feel free to drop them. Uh. I haven't gotten an email about practice submissions yet. I remember they mentioned that they were gonna have like practice, um, so you can get familiar with the software and how it works. And I remember hearing that somewhere, but I um, I haven't um, actually gotten an email about it. I got an email to confirm AP cour- like, that you're taking the tests. Um, that I got that was saying, oh, you're confirmed for these exams. But I haven't gotten anything about practice yet, which um, I feel like um, should be coming soon though, because the AP exams are in three weeks almost. Um, how should we work on evidence beyond the documents? So evidence beyond the documents is something that is not easy to practice necessarily. I think the best way to practice evidence beyond the documents is just to refresh on every everything that you learned in this year. And that might sound crazy, but you don't know um, what is going to come up or what event, and you can't have this set study guide almost. Because there's so many things that are coming up and there's so many events that you might get it on, that it's just best for you to know um, general things um, of each empire, just by reading a review book, or if you have a textbook with you, rereading notes, and that's how I'd practice evidence beyond the documents and start trying to create those connections in your brain between different events. Um, will there be a Q and A for another time period? I'm sh- I think there are Q and As for um, different time periods. Um, the next one I have is the Cold War. Um, it's not a Q and A, it's just um, anything about the Cold War. Um, um, so what happened during the period between like the nineteen fifties um, to nineteen ninety-one, when um, the Soviet Union um, separated into different nations? And then we're just going to talk about um, different um, communist um, beliefs around the world. So we're gonna talk about Indonesia and Ghana, the Korean War and civil war in Angola, war in Nicaragua, the Berlin Wall, and then eventually the Soviet Union. So um, if you want to go, that um, stream is tomorrow at two Eastern Standard Time. So um, you can definitely come in. It's not something that's gonna be tested on the AP exam. But um, I've told people this, like um, people that are saying like, oh, it's not on the AP exam, you don't have to learn it. And that's not necessarily true if you're on an honors or an AP history track. Because um, you're taking AP world now. Let's just say that you guys are freshmen or sophomores, right? Um, next year you'll take, let's say next year or another two years, you'll take AP US History. Well, the Cold War is gonna come up a lot. Um, you're gonna have um, you're gonna t- talk about um, presidents during the time and how they dealt with um, the Cold, um, the Cold War. You're gonna talk about US relations with the Soviet Union, the Eastern Bloc, Western Bloc. You're gonna talk about McCarthyism. And all of these topics are still gonna come up in, if you take US history. They're like, what if I take AP human geography? And this is gonna come up again. You, human geography is the movement of humans and the changing of borders over time. And when we're talking about movement of humans, the Berlin Wall, people trying to And when we're talking about movement of humans, the Berlin Wall, people trying to escape, or if we're talking how countries and places geographically changed over time, Soviet Union ca- went from one humongous country to fifteen smaller ones in one day, not not exactly one day. So um it's still something important that you need to know, especially if you're taking other histories, if you're planning on taking US or human geography or European history as well, I would definitely stay in and it's gonna be a great stream anyway, so. Um the Cold War was over thirty years, it's not exactly a real war, like a war that we imagine bombs and guns and um soldiers, it was something called a proxy war, which I will go into more depth about tomorrow. Um it was mainly a series of threats between the United States and the Soviet Union and their allies. And we're gonna be talking about that tomorrow, um as I said before, just some brief events if you are interested in um coming tomorrow. Um we're gonna go over uh Sakarno in Indonesia, Kwame Nkrumah in Ghana, the Korean War, the Angola and Civil War, um Sandinista Contra Conflict in Nicaragua, the Berlin Wall, the Soviet Union, and then if we have time, we could talk about the Olympics. The nineteen eighty, I believe in nineteen eighty-four um Olympic boycotts. Um if we have time, we can talk about that tomorrow as well, if that's something that you guys are interested in, because I believe that that completely goes with the Cold War as well. So be sure to come tomorrow, be me and Jed, who is another student streamer. And he is a junior from California, so we'll be doing that stream together. Um if you have any other questions, you can ask them still, I'm still here to answer questions. And if not, we can um end the stream a little bit before the one hour. Um but if not, um ask away, I'm still here to answer questions as long as you guys need. Um Okay, thank you, as long as I could help. Like I'm just, I want you guys to like understand a very general, well, still a little bit detailed about this post-classical era. And I feel like it's something that's very overlooked now, just because of how AP world was edited. Um how the changes were made, so now we focus more on like fourteen hundreds to seventeen hundreds. So I just wanna make sure that you guys all have a solid background and what's going on before stuff like the Columbian Exchange or um which is around this period as well, but um things like the Columbian Exchange, um the French Revolution, um Haitian Revolution, all the revolutions um pretty much happen after this. Um can you briefly go over the different types of trading networks? Yeah, so we have um Indian Ocean trade, um trade over water, using boats and they would use um the current of the water to move them as well as different sails that were developed during this time. Um it would only um Indian Ocean trade would only happen during um when it wasn't monsoon season. Um if you know Southeast Asia is very well-known for its horrific weather and rain um certain parts of the year. So what they would do is I believe they would like go before monsoon season and trade and then they would come back during. Um it, this was the trade of luxury goods, this was things like spices and gold and silk. And it was mainly between countries in Southeastern Asia, China, and then um the Swahili city-states, countries like um mainly Tanzania nowadays. Um and then we have the sand roads, AKA the Transaharan Roads. Um trade in Africa, this is um trade of things like uh ivory and cacao. And this is in Northern Africa to Western Africa. Um also the spread of religion along this as well, um Christianity and Islam. Um and then uh the other road is the Silk Roads. Silk Roads, the largest one out of all of them without a doubt, um spans across Europe and Asia. Um again, a very cultural, very um ethnically diverse, culturally diverse, religiously diverse region, people are being exposed to Islam and Judaism and Christianity and it creates diasporic communities, like I mentioned before, the Sogdians. And there's major trade cities along, um so we have Kashgar, which is now in China's Uighur province um province and Samarkand, which is in Uzbekistan. And um along this road, we have the spread of different reli- um different religions, but we also have the spread of diseases. And that's something we'll see in all of these roads is because people coming from different areas and they don't necessarily have the immunities and they haven't been exposed to different things, it causes disease outbreaks. So the Caravelle was one of those boats in the Indian Ocean trade, yeah. Um Indian Ocean trade was really well-known for the innovations that it made and I couldn't list all of them cuz it probably would have taken the entire page. But we have the Caravelle, we have the astrolabe, Latin sails, Dao ships, junks, which are from China. Um that's all I can think of, but it's quite a few. Um the met- netic compass um as well. Um that is the Indian Ocean trade. Um so if you guys have any other questions still, um feel free to ask, even if they're from the different units, I can go back to unit one. If you guys have any questions still about unit one, but if not, we can end this at um sixty-five minutes. And then um you guys can study or do it as you wish or do what you guys are doing at home during quarantine. Just hoping everyone is okay and safe and really studying for these AP world history exams because uh they're coming in three weeks, and I remember when I was taking AP world, um I did not, the time passed by so quickly. Um I had AP world and then straight after that I had a track meet and the next day I had AP Music Theory at eight AM. And I was just not expecting that and I forgot that the AP exams were coming so quickly. They really don't exaggerate when they say the AP exams are in three weeks, like it'll feel like two. Um for unit one, was another economic development, paper money and gunpowder? Yeah, economic um development, you have mm paper, um don't exactly remember who created paper, I think Kai Luen created paper and um paper money as well, and then we have gunpowder, um which obviously are different um things that helped the Chinese economy and were some changes in um China, some new advancements. Advancements like chompa rice, which grew quicker and saved people from starvation essentially, and the Grand Canal, which is um was the greatest, the largest um um the greatest and largest um artificial river uh at the time and it really helped for trade. Um so gunpowder is a technological development, right? Um gunpowder, you can see as both, you're making advancements in technology, but you're also selling it, um which um could cause money, you could see them as both. I wouldn't say that gunpowder is just technological, even though it is very much so a technology, but you're still selling this and um you're still making a profit off of it, so I guess you could also call it economic development as well. Um okay, guys, so that's the end of the stream, I hope you guys all are okay and safe. Um um make sure you're studying for the AP exam, please, it's in three weeks, I believe, I don't know exactly the date. But I'm sure you guys will all do well, make sure you study, study, please. Um s- um get sleep, um most importantly. Um I'm glad that I could help you guys so much and I hope to see you at my stream tomorrow at two PM Eastern. So I'll see you guys tomorrow if you decide.